Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. I'm Dan Garadmick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. Commissioner, you've got some room over there.
[Laughter]
Today's date is April 15. We are joined today by Commissioners, Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Sirulo, Dweck remotely, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Kurmani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. Welcome to all of you, and thank you. Last week was a busy, busy week for the Department of City Planning and our City of Yes initiative. Before we get to today's agenda, I just want to take a moment to highlight some of what took place last week. We started the week on Monday morning with a great rally with the mayor and dozens upon dozens of supporters of City of Yes for Economic Opportunity ahead of the council's public hearing on the initiative. As I noted on the steps of City Hall, we had a wide range of supporters, including chambers of commerce, business improvement districts, freelancers, civics, small businesses, industrial services providers, urban agriculture entrepreneurs, and people who like to dance. With this plan, we are going to modernize outdated zoning and say yes to making it easier for small businesses to open, yes to reducing storefront vacancies, yes to expanding clean manufacturing, to helping entrepreneurs and freelancers, and more. We then had a productive and comprehensive hearing with the city council throughout the morning and afternoon, and thanks to everyone who turned out and spoke at the rally and who testified at the council hearing. Moving from economic opportunity to housing opportunity, last week we also released the draft annotated text of City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, our plan to address New York's housing crisis by enabling a little more housing in every neighborhood. By releasing this early and alongside an illustrated guide to its major components, we're giving New Yorkers additional time to understand the proposal before community boards and borough presidents begin their official review. Accompanying the annotated zoning text is an illustrated guide to housing opportunity, which clearly explains the elements of the proposals and shows how they would provide New Yorkers with more housing choice. I encourage everyone to dive into the annotated text, the guide, and our other explainers, which are all available at NYC.gov/YesHousingOpportunity. I'd also like to note that April is Fair Housing Month in honor of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. We released the draft zoning text on April 11, 56 years to the day that President Lyndon Johnson signed the Fair Housing Act into law. We see our proposal in City of Yes as a key step to further fair housing, creating a little more housing in every neighborhood and tearing down the invisible walls that exist around too many of New York's neighborhoods. Fifty-six years after the Fair Housing Act, we still have a long way to go to create a truly fair and integrated city, but this is an important step forward. I also want to express my thanks to the city council for approving Willetts Point Phase Two last week. This transformative Queens project will deliver thousands of income-restricted affordable homes, billions of dollars in economic activity, good jobs, open space, and a new stadium that will benefit New Yorkers for decades to come. Finally, speaking of Queens, I encourage people who live and work in Long Island City to join City Planning and Councilmember Julie Wan tonight at 6:30 PM for our Long Island City Neighborhood Plan Town Hall. It takes place at Jacob Rees Neighborhood Settlement, 1025 41st Avenue, and is a great opportunity to make your voice heard in this community planning process. Onward to today's agenda. We have one notable project starting public review today, known as Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza and located at 52 West 116th Street. This proposal by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development would create a 100% income-restricted mixed-use residential and community facility building with nearly 110 homes, along with a renovated home for the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market. In addition to serving as a cultural hub for the neighborhood, this building is a great example of transit-oriented development, only steps away from the 2-3 trains at 116th Street. We also have an opportunity for any post-hearing follow-up that Commissioners would like about the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency Project. And there we go. With that, Sarah, the floor is yours, and thanks, everybody, for being here. We'll be joined by Commissioner Benjamin. Welcome.
Good afternoon, and welcome to City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, April 15, 2024. The time is 1:05 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District 10. Our presenter is Trevor Lovitz.
Great. Welcome, Trevor.
So the following is an application by HPD for Urban Development Action Area Designation and Project Approval to facilitate 100% income-restricted housing development with ground-floor community facility space in Harlem, Manhattan Community District 10. HPD is proposing to dispose of four contiguous city-owned lots, which form today's Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market. For those of you who are not familiar, this is an outdoor vendor market on West 116th Street. It contains four date stalls in which entrepreneurs, many of whom are of African origin, wear various non-food goods and crafts, such as African clothing, pottery, baskets, and more. The four lots would be conveyed to the project sponsor, Shabazz Precita Management, which would then redevelop the vendor market into an enclosed, modern facility on the ground floor of the new development. Above the new vendor market podium would be two residential towers containing 109 income-restricted housing units. Land uses surrounding the development generally feature mid-rise residential pre-war walk-ups with ground-floor retail, community facilities, and you can see just south of the development site, which is outlined in red, NYCHA's Martin Luther King Tower campus, which generally is about 13 stories. Immediately adjacent, the development site between West 115th and West 117th Streets, between Malcolm X Boulevard and Fifth Avenue, you're able to see that prevailing typology is mixed-use elevator buildings with commercial and residential uses. And towards the northwest, that's a sort of pre-war rowhouse context for which Harlem is famous. So the zoning in the surrounding area is almost exclusively R7-2, but you can see between 115th and 117th, a C4-5X district was mapped. This was first mapped in an application by HPD in 1998 as part of the Millbrank-Frawley Urban Renewal Area Amendment. C4-5X districts are a pretty flexible commercial district, a contextual commercial district. They permit up to five FAR residential uses and four FAR residential floor area. In comparison, R7-2s permit 3.44 of residential floor area. You can also see C1-4 commercial overlays are widely mapped along the avenues. And 116th Street, these permit up to two FAR of commercial floor area in high-density zoning districts. A bit of background and timeline about the marketplace and the surrounding area. This is part of an active urban renewal area, the Millbrank-Frawley West Urban Renewal Area. This was first established in 1967, and has since been extended and modified multiple times. In today's urban renewal area, this is designated, the development site is designated as Site 32D for community facility, commercial, and residential uses. It's important to note here that the provisions of the urban renewal area do not supersede the underlying zoning, and there's no additional bulk controls associated with this urban renewal plan. The market itself was first established in 1994. This came at a time when the city government was sort of cracking down on unlicensed street vending, which was widely prevalent at 125th Street, and at this time, notably amongst Senegalese street vendors. The Malcolm Shabazz Development Corporation took in these dispossessed vendors and founded the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market as a business incubator to help them grow their businesses and provide a space for them to vend their ware, since become a very well-known local institution, both in Harlem and throughout the city. As noted previously, the C4-5X zoning designation was mapped in 1998 by HPD. It's been extended multiple times and has since facilitated multiple affordable housing developments within that geography of the C4-5X district, such as the Kalahari, which you can see at bottom right, and is immediately adjacent to the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market, the entrance to which you can see bottom left. And here's an aerial of the surrounding context. You can see the King Towers that I noted previously. You can also sort of see the effect of the C4-5X zoning in the urban form between 115th and 117th Street. Almost all the developments in that geography were built after 1997, so you can really see the provisions of C4-5X play out here. Prior to the '90s, it consisted largely of unimproved vacant lots as a result of both the disinvestment of the '70s and '80s and clearance through eminent domain under the urban renewal plan. You can see the sort of rowhouse pre-war context that I noted previously elsewhere. Notably here is the Masid Malcolm Shabazz, just barely visible at the bottom left here on West 116th Street. This is a mosque where Malcolm X preached in the 1950s. It was subsequently renamed after him, as was Lenox Avenue. You can see it's Malcolm X Boulevard. The Community Development Corporation, the Malcolm Shabazz Community Development Corporation, is associated with this mosque. It's done significant work in the realm of affordable housing production along West 116th Street, and this is the same entity that runs the Harlem Market and is one of the sponsors for this proposed development. You can also see Marcus Garvey Park. It's located about five blocks uptown from the development site, and Central Park is located about five blocks to the south. And you can also see the 2- and 3-train subway entrance is right here at the intersection of Malcolm X and West 116th Street. You can see the development site shown in red here. As noted previously, this is four contiguous city-owned lots. It's a through lot connecting, running from West 115th to West 116th. It's flag-shaped with approximately 112 feet of frontage along West 116th and about 100 feet of frontage along West 115th. There's entrances along both frontages, but West 116th Street is the primary entrance to the market. And here's some photos of existing conditions along West 116th. You can see the primary entrance here. Again, there's the Kalahari in the background in the photo at left, and here is West 115th with the southern entrance in the photo at left, and the King Towers clearly visible in the photo at right. So the proposed development would consist of 4.91 FAR. The bulk of the development is as of right. It contains two residential towers, both along the northern and southern frontages, both rising to 95 feet across nine stories. The proposed development itself would encompass about 105,000 square feet of floor area, about 20,000 of which would be community facility space. Because this is a business incubator, a nonprofit, this is technically a community facility use as opposed to a commercial use. You can see the ground floor covers almost the entirety of the lot. This would contain the replacement market space, and it would contain about 60 vendor stalls. The use groups are 2 and 4, and overall would contain 109 income-restricted housing units. It would be 100% affordable. Here, we can see the ground floor plan. You can see the booths and the new replacement stalls. The new facility would feature 60 stalls in total. Eleven of these would be rented as food business incubators. Currently, the market does not include food uses, so this would be a new addition. Another new addition would be about 1,000 square feet of event space. The existing curb cuts that provide entrances along 116th and 115th Street would not be altered as part of this project. Notably, this space would be enclosed from the elements, and there would be HVAC, providing the vendors with a more comfortable environment. The hours of operations would also not be altered. The market currently operates seven days a week, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And a couple notes about the residential space. On the rooftop of the community facility podium and between the two residential towers, there would be landscaped open space available for building residents. This would be about 8,500 square feet. No parking would be provided in the proposed development, as this is all income-restricted housing within the transit zone. So during the construction, it's anticipated that the majority of vendors will be temporarily relocated to another vacant lot that is owned by HPD on the same block along West 116th Street. About 36 vendors would be relocated to this plot, whereas 12 vendors whose business is primarily tailoring and driven by referral would be relocated to a retail storefront in central Harlem. The specifics of the relocation plan are still being worked out, but HPD ensures us that all current vendors would be offered the right to return to the replacement Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market once it is complete. So pursuant to Local Law 76... 78, excuse me, a racial equity report was required for this project, as it entails the disposition of city-owned land to facilitate a project containing more than 50,000 square feet of residential floor area. Central Harlem South, which you're able to see here, you're able to see the displacement risk index map at left here. Central Harlem South is classified as being at intermediate risk for displacement. You can see a bit of the affordability distribution, the proposed affordability distribution. This is tentative and subject to change at right here. The project would be financed through HPD's ELIT term sheet. The ELIT term sheet requires that 50% of the units be designated or set aside as support of housing for formerly homeless individuals. So this proposed development would meet that with 16% of the units as being set aside for the formerly homeless. The balance of the units would be affordable at different AMIs, but no AMIs exceeding 80% area median income. A bit more data from the racial equity report. You're able to see that central Harlem, which is, if you look at the bar chart on left, it retains its historical status as a primarily African-American community, with 50% of residents being black, of black, non-Hispanic origin. About a quarter of the population is Hispanic slash Latino, and 50% is white. Going a bit further, you're able to see the demographic changes this neighborhood has witnessed between the years 2010 and 2020. The black, non-Hispanic population over this decade experienced modest losses in population. Conversely, if you look at far right, the white, non-Hispanic population experienced significant population increase of about 80% over the same time period. We see a similar trajectory among the Asian, non-Hispanic population, also increasing about 80% between 2010 and 2020. And the Hispanic and Latino population experienced a more modest population gains over the same period of time, growing about 21%. HPD states that this project will combat displacement of existing residents by providing permanently income-restricted housing for New Yorkers of lower income levels, and it will also... Excuse me, I lost my place. And it will also assist entrepreneurs with the modern facility in which they can grow and expand their business. So in summary, there's only one action associated with this project, that is the UDAP. Action that HPD is seeking, designation of an urban development action area and project approval. Approval of this action will enable the disposition of city-owned land to a sponsor of HPD's choosing, which will then develop the aforementioned Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza. This proposed development will feature a modern market space for the vendors, as well as 109 units of permanently income-restricted housing. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thanks very much, Trevor. Just a couple of quick ones from me. One is, there's no proposed zoning change here. This is just the UDAP and the disposition. You said C4-5X, which is an R7-X equivalent, has five FAR for residential, and this one is, this proposal, how many FAR for residential?
It would be about 3.91 for residential use and about one for community facility.
Okay, got it. And the vendor relocation, so there's 58 vendors who are there today, all of whom would be invited back to the new space once it is constructed. Is that correct?
Right. According to HPD, there's a right of return for all vendors.
Okay. And 46 of them, you said, would temporarily be located to a site just down the street?
36 would be...
Oh, 36, I'm sorry. 36 would be temporarily relocated to 68 West 116.
Right.
Correct?
And that's that sort of narrowish lot outlined...
The lot here says 46, just so you know, so it would be...
Oh, sorry.
Is it 36 or 46?
It's 38.
38, okay. But 38 vendors will be temporarily located to 68 West 116th Street.
I'm so sorry, Che Garadmick. 36 vendors would be temporarily relocated here, and the 12 vendors whose primarily business is tailoring and driven by referral would be relocated to the storefront.
Okay.
We've been going back with HPD on these numbers.
Okay, and we'll go through this with them when they come back for the hearing. But most importantly here, they will, they've already begun and are working on their engagement with the vendors and are working on the alternative location for them in the interim, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Notice site very well, but I haven't been there recently. Are the vendors still there, or have they been relocated? They're still there currently. Okay. All right, I wanted to just drill down on their, well, the chair said right of return, which is an interesting term. And you said they'll be invited back. So, I mean, do they, are they currently there pursuant to leases, individual leases?
I think that is the arrangement they have with the Malcolm Shabazz Development Corporation, which runs the market.
All right. So would they not have a preferential right to occupy the new sites? I mean, when you say invite, it sounds more casual than an actual preference to return.
No, I think the plan is that the majority of these vendors would return in the new market, in addition to the new vendors that'd be coming out, these food users that aren't, sorry, these food vendors that aren't currently present at the site. HPD, I think, anticipates that the vendors whose business is tailoring, and that's driven by referral, not so much people walking into the market, might opt to stay in this retail storefront. That's going to be selected for them in central Harlem. But according to HPD, any vendor currently operating should have the option of returning to the replacement market space. But I know this is sort of a tricky topic, and HPD would probably be better to speak to that on the specifics of the relocation.
And I will pursue that with them. I think you indicated that the Shabazz Corporation would manage the market in its new, in the new site.
Right.
Do you know who will manage the buildings, the residential buildings?
So it's a joint venture between the Malcolm Shabazz Community Development Corporation, which, as we've noted, established the market in 94, and I believe the other entity is Precita?
Precita, yeah.
Precita, okay. And so they're forming a new LLC. That's a joint venture, and I think they'll be primarily responsible for developing and managing the residential component of the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza, whereas the CDC will continue its oversight of the marketplace itself.
Okay. It looks like this project will take roughly two and a half years. Do you have any...
The EAS dates the build year is 2026. I don't know if that has a strong basis in reality, but that's the year they're putting out there.
Maybe late 26. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Let me go to Commissioner Rampershead.
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick question with regards to the current size of each of the vendor spaces, and how does that relate to the new space? Will they have a reduction in size, or do you know the average size?
Of the stalls themselves?
Yeah. And how would that work? Since they're invited back, is it like first come, first served, so whoever comes in first gets the bigger space?
That's a great question. I don't know if there's actually a reduction in the stall size or how that's going to be allocated to the vendors. I think that's one for the development team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Raj, and answer your question, and some of the materials that said the space currently is about eight square feet, which is pretty small. And as you can see from there, it looks like maybe those completely interior ones maybe are the eight square feet, and maybe the ones along the western wall, or they look to be smaller, but I don't know if that's an accurate spatial representation. But the ones that are not along the wall on the eastern side seem to be at least twice the size. So you're right. I mean, I think that's a question for HPD, how are they going to decide who gets what And in the market for years, there's been an issue about the selling of food on the premises that is prepared on the premises, with some vendors wanting to do that and with the community not wanting to have it. So it surprises me that HPD is going to embark and allow, if all 46 of the vendors who are going to be allowed to relocate back, relocate back, and the tailors who are relocating to this retail space all decide they want to be back in the market, one, there aren't that many spaces left.
Well, there are 48 stalls now, and the replacement market has...
59.
It's 60, I think. And 11 of these would be the new food vendors. So I think that even with that increment, it seems as though there's enough stall space for both the tailors and the...
I'd be interested to hear from the department about why they think the food issue is appropriate now.
Right.
In the other market that the mosque ran on 125th Street, it was a terrible... I don't know if you would agree, Ken?
I won't disagree.
The food, the smells, the odors...
Was that open-air, too?
No, it was closed like this one is going to be.
Yeah.
It was terrible, and it led to other businesses not wanting to be there. So I really would question whether we want to start... I think it's one thing if they want to sell foods that are prepared elsewhere and they're just sold here. It's something else if they're going to be preparing them here. The equipment that's needed in order to make it happen, I'm just not sure why we're doing it.
Right. Hopefully, there's better ventilation this time around, but we'll flag that for the project team to speak to.
Well, presumably, it would be venting into the rooftop above, which is the recreational space for the buildings, which would also not be great.
Yeah, you can see there are some sunlights that maybe would feature venting, but thank you for your point, Commissioner Benjamin.
Well, there's one more issue, which is the recycles in the residential building. In some of the... In some of the, the material, it suggested that the recycle space was only going to be five square feet per floor, which seems in this age of packages received and everything else woefully small.
Seems a little tight.
So I'm just wondering if we can get that re, if they can make the recycle space big enough for people to really use it, particularly since recycles in New York are only collected once a week. And so the stuff has to be stored somewhere. Maybe there's more storage elsewhere, and the janitors are going to bring it down every day. I don't know, but I'd be interested to know more about that. And my last one, I know it's a standard, but the fact that they're only going to have one washing machine for every twenty people and one dryer for every thirty people, I know that's the standard, but it just doesn't seem realistic.
Thank you. We'll pass this on.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Building on some of your questions and trying not to repeat them. I was wondering if the next time around, we can understand to what extent have the vendors been involved in the design of the, of the new space? I had questions, actually building on your comment about lighting, illumination of the, of the market. It sounds, I noticed that there were just a few sort of like skylights in there, so I was wondering if you can, we can learn more about that. And then my second group of questions was associated with the energy standards. So there was, there were a couple lines in there suggesting that there will be some minimum, minimal, sort of like a energy efficiency measurements, but I'm wondering if, you know, given the size of the building, given the fact that this is sort of like a disposition and so forth, I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to go further. I know that HPD has, you know, come to us in the last sort of like months with really interesting passive house projects, and you're really sort of like very interesting energy efficiency standards. And so I'm wondering if what's, if we can, you know, push forward on this.
We did hear from HPD that this will be designed to passive house efficiency standards, and that the proposed development actually did win an award from NYSERDA last week for incorporating energy efficiency design standards. I, I can't say specifically what about this proposed development makes it so efficient, but I'm sure the applicant would be more than happy to speak to that when they, when they appear.
Yeah, thank you. That would be great. I would love to learn what, what was changed because in the materials that we have, we have just a few lines, and other than just mentioning some very basic measurements, there's not, not, not that probably because it just happened, maybe. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Gold?
Excuse me. Thanks. Just a quick question. In the presentation, the, excuse me, the relocation site looks significantly smaller than the development site. But we have a sense for what happens there. Obviously, there'll be less vendors, but are they using that whole development site, and are they going to get a lot less space now, or is there enough space there for them?
I wish I knew. I think it is a somewhat fortunate coincidence that HPD happens to own another vacant lot so close to the development site. So maybe there'll be less impact in terms of foot traffic to the market during the construction period for that reason. Like we noted, thirty-six vendors will be occupying this, this lot. It does appear to be about one-fourth the size of the existing site. So I think the development team will have to speak to whatever configuration they have in mind and how they plan to make that work during the construction period, whether that entails smaller stalls or.
Got it. Yeah, I can't tell if this is to scale, but if it's to scale, it looks to me to be like an eighth or a sixteenth of the, the existing site. So, but that said, maybe they could speak about how much of the site's being used and how they're going to facilitate. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Muddin?
Thank you, Chair. In the, in the past, it was intentioned by the mosque to take the development site, develop it, relocate the vendors to the relocation site, move the vendors back into the development site, and then develop the relocation site. Is that not part of this plan? Has that been abandoned? Do we know what the relocation site will yield at a future date?
Well, so the plan is that the vendors would be, thirty-six of the vendors would be relocated to this site outlined in yellow during the construction period, and it would all be built in one single phase.
I think you misunderstood the question.
I think I did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the question is about the relocation site itself. When this was envisioned, I'm going to say in two thousand and six, Imam Pasha had posed to the city that both development sites be developed, and what they would do was, would, would be was to phase it, and they would move the vendors from the now mosque, from the now site, move them to the relocation site, build the site where the market is, move the vendors back into the market, and then develop this relocation site in yellow.
I'm not aware of any plans associated with the site outlined in yellow beyond.
That would be my question to HPD. Why was that, this not included as part of this parcel to redevelop? Because the intention of the, of this development site was to build both them in two different phases in the years past.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, no, it was too many years ago.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's what happens when you're old, you get baby.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Very welcome.
Okay. With that, this item is now certified. Thank you very much, Trevor. We look forward to seeing it back and hearing directly from HPD on some of these items. Thank you. Sarah, let's move on to the next item today.
The second, second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a zoning map amendment in Queens, New District Seven. Our presenter is Joy Chen on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This private application, twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard Commercial Overlay, was certified on January second and is back for pre-hearing. The project area is in the Flushing neighborhood of Community District Seven, Queens. Next slide. The applicant proposes to develop a new one-story commercial building. They are anticipating an eating and drinking establishment with a drive-through totaling approximately two thousand five hundred square feet at point four four FAR. Cars will enter the drive-through from College Point Boulevard and exit onto Twenty-Eighth Avenue as indicated by the gray arrows, and pedestrians will enter and exit onto College Point Boulevard indicated by the red arrows. Next slide. To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes mapping a new commercial overlay of C two-three in an existing zoning district split between an R four and R five B zone, indicated by the dotted black lines on the image to the right. Surrounding zoning districts are M one-one to the east, M two-one to the south, R four to the west, and R five B and R four A districts to the north. The closest C two-three commercial overlays are located approximately five blocks north of the rezoning area at College Point Boulevard and Twenty-third Avenue. The applicant owns the development site Lot Twelve, which totals approximately five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square feet and is a vacant and unimproved lot. No residential uses are proposed here because of the predominantly light industrial and commercial character along this stretch of College Point Boulevard, which is across the street from a gas station and the thirty-five acre New York City Police Academy Training Complex within the College Point Special District. According to the applicant, this rezoning to map a commercial C two-three overlay over existing R four and R five B zoning districts is appropriate because it would reinforce the commercial and light industrial nature of College Point Boulevard, allow for greater flexibility in commercial use that is consistent with the character of the surrounding area, as well as resolve existing non-conforming issues within the project area. Next slide. On March eleventh, Queens Community Board Seven recommended approval of the application with thirty-two in favor, zero against, and two abstaining. Next slide. On March fourteenth, the Queensborough President held a public hearing, and we are waiting their approval, which is pending and actually just came in fifteen minutes ago. So we will prepare a cover memo with that approval, along with their conditions. And the applicant rep, Richard Lobell, will be giving a three-minute remote presentation at the public hearing next Wednesday, April seventeenth. His team will also join remotely to answer any questions that arise at that time. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to pick this one up for the public hearing on Wednesday. Unless there are any questions now. Being none, thank you very much. We'll, we'll see them here on Wednesday. What's next, Sarah?
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a zoning map amendment in Queens, New District Two. Our presenter is Bree Mihaya, and Commissioner Ramperchad is your cue.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, so this is an application submitted by Lucky Supply Holding LLC. It's for a zoning map amendment at fifty-eight seventy-five Queens Midtown Expressway in Masbeth, Queens, Community District Two. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment. And just as a reminder, this was certified on February twentieth of this year. Next slide, please. Okay, the applicant is proposing to enlarge an existing one-story warehouse building to three stories with approximately one hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet of manufacturing floor area, and seeks to include an additional loading berth, a fifteen-foot wide curb cut, and nine accessory off-street parking spaces for their restaurant supply business. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment from an M one-one to an M one-four district. This would enable the applicant to expand their building up to a two-point O FAR instead of the current one-point O FAR. Next slide, please. On March second, Queens Community Board Two recommended granting a conditional approval for this application with a unanimous support from thirty-three members and zero in opposition and zero abstentions, with the stipulation that the applicant replace or add any additional green infrastructure to increase onsite stormwater retention. Next slide, please. On March fourteenth, the Queensborough President held a public hearing for this application, and I do just want to give an update. We have received a conditional approval of this application with the stipulation that the applicant seek to hire locally and collaborate with local community groups to engage in outreach and job fairs to reach their hiring goals, and that there be quarterly reporting about their progress to reach their, their targeted goals. During the public hearing, the chair had asked how feasible it is to install the green infrastructure that the community board had requested, and what types of infrastructure the applicant has considered. In response, the applicant shared that they are considering adding bioswells and possibly planting trees along the sidewalks to address flooding concerns. They also mentioned potentially installing solar panels on the roof of their second floor to reduce energy demands. And with this, I conclude my presentation. I can take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Bree. Much like the other one, we're going to pick this one up on Wednesday for the public hearing. Anything, any more business here before then? Okay. All right. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you, Bree. Sarah, what's next?
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District Fifteen. Our presenter is Catherine Nessel.
Great, hello.
Good afternoon, Chair Gronnik and Commissioners. This is a pre-hearing review for Twenty-one Eighteen Avenue U rezoning, which is a private application from Twenty-one Eighteen Avenue U LLC for a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment in the Madison neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Fifteen. The application was certified on February fifth, and the public hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday, April seventeenth. The applicant proposes a four-story-plus penthouse development with an FAR of three-point four one. The development would consist of about twenty thousand four hundred and fifty square feet in total, with fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty square feet of residential space and four thousand eight hundred square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. Ten dwelling units would be built, of which three would be mandatory inclusionary housing, or M I H, units. Ten car parking spaces and ten bike spaces would be provided in the cellar. To facilitate this proposed development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment. The zoning map amendment would rezone to southern frontage of Avenue U between East Twenty-first and East Twenty-second Streets from an R four C one-three district to an R six A C two-four district. Beyond the depths of a hundred feet, the C one-three commercial overlay would be removed and the R four district would remain. The new R six A C two-four district would increase the allowed residential FAR on this, in this area from point seven five to three-point six with M I H. The zoning tax amendment would establish an M I H area in Appendix F with options one and two in the new R six A C two-four district. On February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, Brooklyn Community Board Fifteen voted thirty-three in favor, two in opposition, and zero abstentions to approve this application. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the borough president held a public hearing on this application, and on April first, the borough president submitted a recommendation to approve this application with two conditions. That, one, the residential floor area and unit count in the proposed development is increased to take full advantage of the allowable FAR, and two, that the applicant consider fully waiving the proposed parking, but at maximum should not include more than six spaces. The applicant rep, Eric Palatnik, will be here in person to provide a presentation on Wednesday with the architectural team available online for any additional questions. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we were going to have a, we'll have a public hearing on this one. I want to recognize the Brooklyn Borough President's push for even more housing. We certainly do appreciate that at this moment in time. We go to Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the presentation. And we'll hear directly from the applicant, but I'm wondering if there's been any response to the two conditions?
Yeah, the applicant will speak more on Wednesday, but I can say that the applicant is, kind of informally, at the community board, a lot of support was given for the fact that there's a one-to-one ratio of parking units. So that's kind of what, the applicant is kind of stuck between the community board and the borough president's recommendations there. For the FAR, the applicant can speak more to the design, but they are relatively close to the maximum allowed FAR. It's a point one-nine difference. So I think with the design of the building, there's some limitations on how much they can take advantage of that, but with the unit count, it's a balance of the sizes of units that they're proposing. They're proposing only two- and three-bedroom units. So if there's kind of more units, then they would have to decrease the size and have some one-bedrooms and studios.
Thank you. Just to clarify, they're proposing three, three-point forty-one out of three-point six, right?
Correct, yes.
Cool, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Dweck on Zoom?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Can, can you shed some light on how this would contrast against the recently announced proposal for a city vest housing opportunity? And how would this look without going zoning under that scenario? I believe this might qualify for the transit or, or town center. So can you shed some light so we can figure out what we're looking at?
Absolutely, yeah. So under city vest housing opportunity, this would be eligible for town center zoning. For an R four district with a C one-three overlay, it would be eligible for maximum FAR of two-point O in comparison with the three-point four one that they're proposing here. So on a site of this size, that is about six thousand square feet, that would allow for about nine thousand square feet of residential space compared to the fifteen thousand that they're proposing, given that it's one-point five residential FAR and then point five commercial FAR with town center zoning.
And, and under town center zoning, it wouldn't trigger an M I H?
That's correct. There'd be no M I H under town center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll pick this one up on, on Wednesday. And I will note that the visual that this building presents is very much what the town center proposal has in mind. A modest, missing-middle apartment building above commercial. And of course, we have those sorts of buildings all throughout the city of New York here. This is really the, the, the size and scale of building that we're talking about in the context of town center zoning. So, but thank you for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's, let's move on. I think we have some future votes.
Future votes for consideration for Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff have prepared a report for eighty fifty Third Avenue DOF site selection and acquisition. Jukey is here to present.
Hello, Jukey. Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application for a site selection acquisition action jointly sought by the New York City Department of Finance and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST, to facilitate thirty-one thousand nine hundred square, square feet of space for DOF for active storage and furniture refurbishment, as well as seven hundred fifty square feet of space on the adjacent parking lot at eight fifty Third Avenue in Sunset Park, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. The CPC vote for this project is this Wednesday, April fifteenth. Both DOF and EDC have responded to questions from the commission. Their answers were submitted in the briefing packages. Their answers were submitted in the briefing packages sent to Commissioners before the April 1 review session. DOF's memo details city agency furniture refurbishment responsibilities. It reiterates that the proposed project is an as-of-right use in the M-31 district and does not require a self-storage special permit. It also outlines DOF's rationale for selecting this site and reshares information on the other sites it considered. EDC's memo notes that 850 Third Avenue is privately managed, and that EDC's sole relationship with this property has been ensuring that the restrictions and obligations under the deed are met and abided. It also details the current tenancy and vacancy in the building. The latter, the vacancy, is roughly 594,000 square feet, or 41% of the building. Regarding EDC's Green Economy Action Plan, the letter shares that other than Brooklyn Army Terminal, the plan does not identify specific properties, either public or private, for specific Green Economy Action Plan-related activities. The department supports this application by DOF and DCAST. The proposed use is permitted as-of-right in the existing zoning district and is compatible with uses that exist in the immediate vicinity of the project's site. These uses include industrial, commercial, public facilities and institutions, and transportation and utility. DOF has operated storage facilities in the immediate vicinity since 1997, and to our knowledge, has not created any conflicts with the surrounding land use. We believe that our sister city agencies have laid out a convincing case that the space at 850 Third Avenue meets DOF's specific needs for active storage of sensitive tax documents. These needs include continuous space, appropriate site security to comply with IRS guidelines, appropriate loading docks and freight elevators, the availability of off-street parking and electric charging stations for DOF's mandated fleet of electric vehicles, and finally, ease of access to the site via the surrounding road and highway networks, and proximity to public transportation for employees to access the site. Long-term use of this site will allow DOF to continue performing its essential work for the city of New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Jukey. Okay, great. All right, let's move on to the next item. Thank you.
Also for consideration on Wednesday are Hillside's authorizations in Staten Island Community District 1, Harbor Light's Courts, as well as SNAT authorizations in Staten Island Community District 2, 45 Meisner Avenue, 23 Mildon Avenue, 543 Toad Hill Road. For consideration on Wednesday, May 1, is New York Public Library Tremont Branch. This is a report regarding a possible landmark designation in the Bronx Community District 6. All right, post-hearing follow-ups. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have DCAST disposition sites CD 11, which had a public hearing at the April 3 public meeting. Tristi is here on Zoom to present a recommendation. Actually, Chair, I think we've lost connectivity with Tristi, so we'll move on.
Okay.
We still have time at the next review session for that one. Next, we have Times Square Major Concession, which had a public hearing at the March 20 public meeting. There was a follow-up memo in your materials, and Joanie is here to present.
Great. Hi, Joanie.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So to quickly recap, this is an application by the Department of Transportation, and they're seeking a major concession on Broadway and 41st Street to 503rd Street that would facilitate a 252,000-square-foot major concession. So this application was at the March 20 public hearing. I returned on April 1 to answer some follow-up questions, and I'm back again with additional information from the applicant. So the chart on this slide was presented at the last review session and was also included in the Commissioner's packet, so to add some additional context, this data provided information on crashes with injuries on Broadway at Times Square before and after DOT interventions. These efforts included the closure and pedestrianization of Broadway, and they were implemented in 2009 and completed in 2016. The data is broken down by mode of transport, and the chart shows the number of injuries reported for each year that was included in the analysis. There may have been multiple injuries reported per crash, and all of the data used is collected by the NYPD. Additionally, other motorized is a new class that's made up of micro-mobility users and therefore has no historical data for comparison. So to speak to the question about efforts made to protect cyclists, along with the build-out of a permanent bike lane, the ongoing Times Square Plaza design simplify intersections and reduce conflicts between vehicles, bikes, and all users in the area. And these are also in conjunction with efforts made through the Broadway Vision Plan that will create shared streets and result in safer conditions for all users. Also included in the Commissioner's packets was the exhibit list previously requested that outlines the elements the bid maintains in the current concession agreement. So on this slide, I've listed out the elements that pertain to signage that was included in that exhibit list. Lastly, Department of City Planning staff supports the requested action as we believe it is consistent with the land uses in the surrounding area. We believe the proposed programming is cohesive with the neighborhood character and will allow for the consistent maintenance, operation, and management of the pedestrian plaza areas in the Times Square neighborhood. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Joanie. And before I go to Commissioner Benjamin for questions, just to put this in context, this is the second time you're back with some answers to questions from Commissioners. The, the data that you're presenting on pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, crashes in Times Square, both before and after physical changes, those, we're not voting on a safety plan as part of this application, correct?
No, that is correct.
Okay.
The pedestrian areas in Times Square are pre-existing, and this application would just allow the revenue generated to go back into maintaining this area.
Okay, so the question before us is about the concession for Times Square Alliance, and any changes that they might make to the streetscape all have to be pre-approved and negotiated with the city's Department of Transportation, is that correct?
Yes, there's a forthcoming concession agreement that will outline all the details, but in terms of this proposal, I'm mainly explaining what the applicant is proposing in order for there to be a determination about whether or not that fits in with the neighborhood content.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, thank you so much for the information, and, and I'd like to thank all the people who helped put it together, although I would still note that after the improvements were made, the number of cycling accidents is up. So the improvements and the wayfinding and the other things that have been done to try and make these locations work better have not proven successful with cyclists. And while I know we're not voting on those improvements, it's part of the agreement that, that the FCRC will vote on, and I'd like to just have it on the record that these improvements are not improving things for the cyclists by a lot.
That's definitely noted, and I'll make sure to communicate that to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, great, thank you, Joanie.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. What's next?
Okay, we're actually going to be, we're going to go back to DCAST disposition side, CD 11. Tristi is on Zoom for a staff recommendation side.
Good afternoon, Chair Gronnik and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to dispose of four city-owned properties. These properties have been deemed surplus due to their small area and street frontages. They cannot be used to fulfill any agency needs as they are sliver lots which are not suitable for development in their own right. The proposed disposition would give the city the flexibility and authority to dispose of these sites in the future. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, we have Redhook Coastal Resiliency, which had a public hearing at the April 3 public meeting. There was a follow-up memo in your weekend materials, and Emily is on Zoom to present.
Right, now Redhook. Thank you. And thanks, Tristi, if I didn't properly thank you for the last one. Okay, here we go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a post-hearing follow-up for the city application for changes to the city map and acquisitions to facilitate the Redhook Coastal Resiliency Project in Redhook, Brooklyn, Community District 6. The applicant provided a written update in response to questions raised during the public hearing on April 3 about the proposed level and line of flood protection, as well as construction, operations, and maintenance of the proposed project, and I'm happy to take any questions about the updated materials provided in your briefing package.
Great, we have a question from Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Emily, so much for the materials. They were very detailed and very thorough. I really appreciate them. I have a couple of follow-up questions. The first question is, well, yeah, the first question is for the department. I didn't see the actual research, the feasibility, kind of like analysis that was referred to as sort of like where the actual hydrological modeling was carried out, and I was wondering if, you know, the, the comments refer to it, but I was wondering if anything of that could actually be shared with us?
Okay, and that wasn't included in the full feasibility study report?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I can take that back to the applicant and see if we can get that.
Thank you, thank you. The, the second, I mean, maybe in, in connection with that, you know, I appreciated the rationale from the city in terms of explaining why it's important to keep the cost-benefit analysis at a one in order to secure the funding from FEMA, but, but I think we need to understand what were some of the assumptions and, and what were the components that were included? I mean, where, you know, in order to understand why the current design is what it is, it would be useful to understand what were the variables that were considered when, when that sort of like line was, was drawn to achieve that 1.0 cost-benefit result. So, so additional information on that would be useful. I have a comment in the materials. The materials say that the project is being designed to reach, you know, under the highest percentile for 2050, and I checked the recording and, and in the discussion, the applicant said 2080, and I was wondering if you can clarify whether it's 2050. It might as well just be that I just wanted to be clear and understand exactly what is it, and also this is to the community's question in terms of what data is being used and to what extent. And then I also was wondering if it's possible to respond to the question that the South Brooklyn Development Corporation is raising with the beer street warehouses in, as this relates to hazardous substances. Again, I appreciate the response generally in terms of the potential resurfacing of pollutants associated with stormwater runoff and the lack of, or the actual sort of like, you know, permeability existing conditions, but I'm, I was specifically asking about what's going to happen to the industrial chemicals that are stored, manufactured, or transported in some of the buildings that are going to be outside of the barrier. I think it would be important to note that even though the, the response lists a series of important regulations, it's missing what I feel is, is undermining this potential risk, which is the community right to no loss. So a lot of the businesses, especially those smaller industrial businesses that the South Brooklyn Development Corporation is pointing at, which are, by the way, next, next door to the supermarket, are actually not regulated in the same way. So some of them, depending on the amount of hazardous substances, may actually have to create a plan, but others may just need to report if, if the amounts do not meet the threshold. So, so additional information in terms of, you know, what do we do? Because the comments seem to suggest that we have current regulation that is already addressing the problem, but I, I respectfully disagree and would like to know, how do we make sure that the businesses that right now are, are exposed, will continue to be exposed to this level of wave action, and, you know, are permitted to, to use hazardous substances, will actually be expected or supported, or, or, or we will have a plan to address potential chemical exposure there? Again, this is a, not for nothing, across the street from, from the, the supermarket, but also, you know, these businesses are going to be left outside of the barrier, and so we need to understand what are the implications of this decision, which is leaving on that side M1 areas outside and, and further down actually M3s, where, where the problem gets a little more complicated as discussed in the meeting.
Okay, so to the, thank you for your questions. To the first question, there, so a correction, yes. At various stages in presentations, it has been stated, 2080 has been stated, and I want to be very clear, so the, the planned level of protection for this project is, it's designed for sea level rise, the high estimates in the 2050s. So the, the full stacking of protections is designed for high estimates of sea level rise in the 2050s, as well as a 10% chance storm within the 2050s, and then freeboard. So, yeah, it's, it's not 2080s, and that's, that's the planned level of protection. And then noted on your outstanding concerns about contaminants, especially for properties outside of the line of protection, and I'll, I'll see if we can get more information about, about potential exposure there.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I also just want to be, you know, aware or acknowledge the fact that we're voting on something that is very specific, and, and, you know, other agencies have specific mandates, jurisdiction on, on some of these questions, but I, I think it would be important to understand what exactly are the conditions in, in, for those industrial businesses, businesses that are outside of the proposed system, and, and, and what are the implications of that? So I'm wondering if, if maybe DEP can provide some information in terms of what these businesses are, and what are the type of chemicals and protection, potential public health implications of, of these chemicals there? Or I don't know if you, or this has been discussed already?
Um, I think I don't have a better answer for you today, so I'll see what we can get for the next review session.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Emily. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, Sarah. Looks like we are pretty much at the end of our agenda unless you tell me otherwise.
Chair, there are no other items today.
Okay, well, with that, I thank members of the Commission and the staff for all the preparation work, and we will look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.